School Board October Meeting at 5:49. The first item is reorganization because Nikki Buck resigned at the last meeting. And so we need to elect a new Chair of the Board. So that's our first, first item on the agenda. And then after we get through the agenda, we should probably, well, I think we should actually do introductions before we reorganize. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we need to introduce like.
Well, we have a new board member on the table.
It's like reorganization, she might get a role.
I haven't seen my idea.
Okay. He should be here soon, but why don't we just for the record Heather, do you want to start introducing or go around?
I'm Heather. It's really nice to meet you. So Beth Roy, and so current Vice Chair and Supervisory Union Board Member.
I'm a Supervisory Board Member as well. I don't know.
I was just.
Okay. I'm glad that.
Beth Anne or Beth.
Beth Anne or Beth.
I think it was. We should. So Beth, you two would do what I did. Oh, okay.
Oh.
Together, so people can take.
Okay.
And Beth Anne was appointed by the Board at the last special meeting. She's a member of the Hartland Board.
Way to go.
Filling the different in the March.
Um, John checked at Town Hall, it's actually 12:27.
Right?
Yes. I know, we did not mean to trick you, but.
Yeah, he gave you all the Christmas papers, then he did double check.
So, oh, you're really in it now, I guess.
Okay. Thank you for not running over the.
I know.
Thank you.
We appreciate that a lot.
My assistant principal, Frank Romeo Prince.
I'm Hannah Benzammon, a member.
You're even.
Oh, Ryan Kuznowski, also a member.
This is just our, we'll move left to the public part. You can.
And it's the end.
All right. I'm Emily, I'm the Heartland's.
Basically, basically, make sure they're there.
Nice. Oh, is that you?
No.
Oh, Emily, I was like, wait a minute. We better. Okay.
All right, so we are going to now reorganize. And so I am going to take a motion for a Chairperson for the Board.
All right, and we hope that we can become Chairperson of the Hartland Board.
Okay, we need a second.
A second then.
Okay. Uh, any other nominations? I have to accept first of all, sorry.
Yes, I accept.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, I don't think we have to discuss it unless anybody wants to.
You're gonna be great.
I'm gonna be great.
Are they still?
I feel like, I feel like, isn't this the way that it's supposed to go, like?
But this person, like, not older person.
All right, but we also now need to.
Well, we need to vote on that.
A vote.
So we need to vote.
Do I vote for myself?
All those in favor.
Oh.
Um, Beth Roy is the Chairperson.
All right.
Okay, now Beth was the Vice Chair.
Yes.
So Beth, I'm gonna have you take over, we need.
All right, I will take nominations for Vice Chair.
Um, I, I could be Vice Chair. Be Vice Chair.
What are you currently? I'm just, I'm gonna be like this egg game, this like shell game of Nowa.
Yes. I don't know what I, am I the tre- no, not treasure, the, the, no, I'm the.
Signer of the manifest.
No, I'm definitely not the signer of the manifest.
You're the Secretary.
Clerk.
I'm thinking of the clerk, the clerk. Maybe you're the clerk.
I can look that.
I don't know what.
Thank you.
Who's on first is right. We're so organized.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Heather as Vice Chair of the Hartland School Board.
I can second.
Have you found Russell? And the dog? Okay, he's walking around somewhere. Do you know where the game is?
Outside?
No. You got, just put in your phone, Paradise Park in Windsor. You gotta go, you'll, you'll find it, it's on Route 44 in Windsor. Okay, by Kennedy Pond. Just go back.
Sorry, but do you accept?
Yes, I will happily accept it.
Oh. What do you say? Oh. You say all those in favor of Heather's. All those in favor of her as Vice Chair?
Hi.
And then we'll figure out what else we need to fill? Uh, you definitely need a signer of the manifest because Nikki's doing that.
Signer of the manifest, so last time we did second of the manifest by who lives closest to Windsor.
Yes. Monthly and the sign off on all the financials.
Yeah.
That's what the signer.
I am.
I, I was already assuming that I was thinking.
Oh, okay, Ryan, I nominate Ryan to be the signer of the manifest.
I accept.
Um, is there a second?
Is there?
Yeah.
I say.
Yeah. All in favor of whoever Ryan is signing? Yes.
I.
I. We will get emails probably from.
Already did.
Oh, so.
You're in. We need a representative on the SU Board then still, because it's me and you and it's always the Chair. So we need another one basically to fill my spot.
I can take that.
Oh, you're gonna do it now?
Yeah. I have some big news. We matched with the new Chair. On the show, so.
So I nominate, hold on, I, sorry, I'm in the middle of an online class, I'm gonna run too.
Oh, you're coming here.
So I nominate Hannah as the representative of the SU.
I second.
All in favor, Sam?
I.
Any changes additions to the agenda?
No.
If they're good. Um, we don't need to move these around at the end, we'll go over and things like that.
Yes, we can do that.
And that doesn't.
We don't need it.
You could do it now.
Okay.
If you wanted to adjust.
Wait, do we need to approve the minutes?
Hold on, so changes in addition to agenda, so I'm gonna move the resignation up, low approval of the minutes, because that's my thing.
We can do that before the public session.
Yep.
Yeah.
So approval of September 2nd minutes.
Uh, I moved to approve the September 2nd minutes. Second.
All favor?
I.
All right, September 29th, we had a special meeting.
I was not there for it, so you will.
Same.
I've moved to, to approve those minutes of the special meeting.
Second.
All favor? I.
I.
Stayed.
Okay, great. And so we're gonna move up down through item five real quick for discussion, all of the nominations, resignation announcements. So Frank, do you wanna?
Do I?
Share the resignation?
Yes, so um, we have a teacher, a PE teacher resigned. Um, he gave his two week notice and he just ended on Friday, so it would have come in sometime September 20th, I believe. Um, and that was, I want to give a reason, right?
Personally.
Personal reasons, that's it, and so we accepted it. To.
So do we have to accept his resignation?
Yeah.
So, so we're gonna move, we're gonna move gentleman's.
Um, oh my God, Matt, yeah, Mr. T.
Except Mr. T's resignation. All second. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, so we're gonna be moving to public session in three minutes. So, just so you, Ryan, you are the clerk currently.
Yes.
So you're gonna be the clerk and the signer of the manifest?
Yeah, I'm the member, so.
And I will. Yes.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you know.
They're oversized shirts.
Oh, it's something.
Well, thank you for being here.
Good to see you, it's so good to see you. They're good, they're good, everybody's good.
They're applying to college.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
No, do you want me to start? Okay, okay.
That'd be great, um, since, since you have a plan.
Yes, okay. Um, so welcome to everyone who is here tonight, both in person and virtually, and doors still open, so some people may continue to join us. Um, we are going to spend a little bit of time tonight, offering a little bit of an overview of Act 73, um, which is a new Vermont law governing education. Um, and we hope that that will be relatively brief, and then we're really here because we want to hear from you all. Um, we are sort of at a point now where there's a very, very active and relatively brief dialogue happening in the state as we look towards designing districts or super. Have a pretty big impact on. Nation, and, but we feel like it's an opportunity for Heartland to have, be a. Solution. Uh, be a. System gets designed, acknowledging the, um, the limitations that may exist and the fact that many of the people who see this coming don't necessarily know that it's all positive, um, but we want to really think sort of solutions oriented and how can we express our values and our priorities as a town, um, to have some control over how, how things shake out over the coming months. Um, so just for, by the way, I think we should, might just start with introductions and then Christine Bourne, our Superintendent, will, will give a little bit of a.
Presentation.
Yeah.
Yep, Frank Romeo, School Principal. Michael Shaver, Assistant Principal.
I'm Hannah Benzammon, um, the, one of the members on the Board.
I'm Beth Anne Swartz, I'm the newest member on the Board.
I'm Ryan Kuznowski, also on the Board.
Heather Vanneta. Like, we're all on the Board. We're on the Board, we're all on the Board. Christine Bourne, Superintendent.
Emily Anne, Student Rep.
She's pretty awesome. All right, so this is a very brief, simple overview of Act 73. I'm sure you've heard about it on the news and probably know much of this, but we thought it'd be a good place to start. So, uh, Act 73 was passed in June of this year and signed into law by Governor Scott in July. And it will bring, it's, the goal is to bring sweeping changes to how Vermont schools are paid for and run. Um, one of the key components of Act 73 is opportunity and access for all students across the state, making it more, a more equitable system. Because currently it is not, um, in some districts, spend a lot less money on education, have a lot less resources than others. So that's part of the rationale behind it. Um, so there is a redistricting, redistricting task force that has been appointed. And they've already started meeting, I think they've met three or four times, they have four more meetings until December 1st, when they are charged with bringing maps to the legislature, uh, three, three, up to three maps. And those maps turn, um, what we currently have in Vermont as districts and supervisory unions into, into larger districts. And the range that they're aiming for is between four and eight thousand students in each of those larger districts. Um, I was asked to just give an overview of supervisory unions as opposed to school districts, because there are some differences. And there's a lot of discussion right now on the task force about whether we, um, maintain SUs, whether we just go with single districts, or whether we do a combination of, of the two of those, um, operational systems like we do now. So, uh, we are a supervisory union, under Southeast, supervisory union made up of, um, three districts. So in, in supervisory unions, there are multiple boards and there is, um, more local control. In, uh, single, uh, school districts, there's one board. So Springfield School District is one, is, is a, is a school district, one board. Hartford, same, same structure, just to give you some context. Um, in a supervisory union, because you have multiple districts and multiple boards, you have multiple budgets, you have multiple audits, you have multiple payrolls, you have multiple hands and associations within that, um, structure. In a school district, you have one budget, one audit, one payroll, et cetera. In a supervisory union, you have school choice with tuitioning for non-operating districts. So, uh, Heartland, for example, is a school choice school because you have a non-operating high school, so you tuition students out. In our supervisory union, Mount Estatney School District, um, does not have a non-operating district there. At pre-K 12, all, all the students in the Mount Estatney School District, which is within our supervisory union, go to the internal school. Um, and middle school too, actually. Um, in a school district, there can be some limited school choice opportunities. So, um, just for context, in the Mount Estatney School District, there is some intra-district choice that can happen and, and the boards can make those policies and plans. So there is, there can be limited school choice in a district. With it, when you can't move employees within the SU, um, unless they are SU employees. In a school district model, you can. So if you have multiple elementary schools within your school district and you have larger, um, numbers of grade level students in one school, you can transfer staff around, um, in a district, you can't do that in a supervisory union. Um, in a supervisory union, there is, um, there is less of a seniority, seniority protection for employees because it's just smaller numbers. In a school district, there's, there's, there's to be more seniority protection for more people because there's just larger numbers, um, employees. And, uh, lastly, SUs cannot own their own property, but, but school districts can. So those are the major differences between districts and supervisory unions. Supervisory unions cannot own properties. So we have to rent our supervisory union space, we can't buy it. It's just in the law.
Your building.
Yes.
We're not talking about like the school itself.
We, well, the supervisory union does not own the Heartland School, Heartland School District does.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so some other, some key changes with the legislation, uh, the law. If new districts are made, they'll be larger and you, um, we will no longer have, um, the local school board in Heartland or our supervisory union board. Now this, you know, this, there's a lot of unknowns right now because the lines haven't been drawn, the maps are not out yet. The, um, school district, uh, the school governance is not set yet, but likely there will be, um, no longer Heartland School Board. Uh, there is a voting board group that is currently needing to develop applicable school board representation maps. So it looks like, uh, and I think it's by, by law, um, when those lines are drawn and those districts are created and the, the boards are, um, elected, representation will likely be based on population. So Heartland has roughly 3,000 people. Um, Woodstock has roughly 3,000 people, Woodstock has less, Woodstock would have probably less representation on a larger school board. That makes sense. Um, there will be a new school funding system, that's what this is, uh, a lot of what this is about. We're going to fight after consolidation happens, if it goes through. Um, and starting in 2028, uh, schools are gonna get money based on a set amount per student. It's a, it's a foundational formula and the districts or SUs or whatever we end up being, will get, um, education opportunity payments based on an amount. In the last year, that was, it was discussed a lot, it looks like it's around 15,000 per student. As, as is, I'm sure it will change, um, as we, as we, you know, move through this. There will be, they've said, um, additional funds for students on IEPs for students that are English learners or low income students, because, um, historically they, they cost more money to educate those, those students within the system. So there'll be some adjustments for that in, within the formula, but, um.
Will you tell us what Heartland?
The current?
Yes. What is Heartland in charge of?
Uh, I think last year, the Heartland first student, uh, was around, was under, just under 19,000, I believe. So it will.
Was it 18?
18 and 18.5, yeah. So there will likely be some, um, cuts.
Yes.
Um, to what we can provide in our schools. So that's, you know, there's a balance between what the taxpayers can, can handle and, and, um, I think we're trying to figure that out, but also provide the best opportunities in education for our kids. Luckily, I don't have to do that, somebody, somebody else has to do that. Um, there will be, um, in this, um, transformation, there'll be a new statewide education property tax that will replace the current system, which is very complicated and hard for people to understand. Um, it's supposed to be simpler. There'll be three different tax tiers and that will start, implementation will start in 2028. So we've got a little bit of time. Um, you've probably already heard this, many private and religious schools will no longer be allowed to use public tuition money. Only schools meaning strict rules can get public funds. Students already enrolled, you know, if your student is currently, um, going to Kimble Union Academy, they can finish out their high school career there. But no, after this year was the last year for, um, public dollars going to some independent schools. So that's just, that's part of the legislation. Um, there are class size minimums as part of this law that, that are going into effect next year. So as we are working through the budgeting process, currently, we are working all the numbers to see if we meet the requirements of class size minimums, and those class sizes are, there's no requirement for kindergarten. First grade is 10, which is, um, roughly what we have. Two, uh, second through, uh, fifth grade is 12. Middle school, so six through eight is a class size minimum of 15. And at the high school level, in the, in the core content classes, which are the graduation requirement classes, there needs to be, um, 18 students in each of those classes. So that goes into effect starting next year. Um, there are many, uh, unknowns. Uh, Heartland could see new district lines, some tax rules, fewer options for high school, we don't know. So I, I can't really speak to a lot of that, um, but would love to get your input tonight on what your, what your thinking is. Um, this is just the timeline, it's small, so max by, you can't even see it on my own computer, December 24th. Max by December 1st are due, the redistricting task force must deliver those. Um, it's a, it's an enormous task, the timeline is unrealistic and they are, they are, um, continue to ask for the data they need from the agency and are not being provided well with all the data they need to make the decisions they need to make. So that's just one of the considerations and concerns. Um, by July 2026, that's this coming July, new district boundaries become effective. By November of 27, the first new school board elections will, will happen. And then by 20, July 2028, the new districts are fully operational.
Or supervisors.
Or it depends.
They keep calling them districts.
And they only do. Whatever.
They haven't made the decision.
It's just do that right there.
Yeah, sure.
I could also share the presentation if anyone would like it.
And this is all being recorded, all.
Yeah. It's, it's, um, the, the, it's an enormous task, there are lots of things that are gonna have to be done to make this happen, which, um, are, are gonna take a lot of time and resources to do, to do it. So we'll see, I guess, we'll see. Would love, um, the timeline to be extended, I think that would make a lot of sense. You don't want sleeping transformation like this done, um, in a rush. You don't, or it's not gonna, you know, have the changes they want it to have. Um, so I just wanted to mention, you may have seen in the paper, there was an article that, uh, mentioned that some local school boards have been having conversations. So, uh, the Windsor Southeast Board, some of the board members, I think most of them were there. Some members from Hartford School Board and some members of the Mountain View, which is Woodstock, have met. They, um, I, I will say, many of them are, um, don't support this act, but they recognize that it's probably a wise idea to talk about who it makes sense to partner with if that comes to fruition. So they did send a letter to the task force, uh, basically saying that, um, our, our supervisory unions, districts, we share educational goals, we do share a career and tech center, that's the Hartford Tech Center. Um, and we're, and we're geographically aligned, so it would, it would make sense for us to be in conversation about that. There is no plan for that, I want to, I wanted to say that out loud, it's just conversations that we'd be willing to talk about that if this needs to happen. So I do know that in the article I read in the paper, there was, um, at the end of that article, there was, um, mention of, uh, a plan for Woodstock's new bond that's going out for a high school. That, well, that works. But that was not part of the discussion that happened at this meeting. So it ended, it ended up in the paper, but it was, that's not, there was no consensus that we're gonna all go to school in Woodstock. So just make that clear. Because people have asked, people have asked, right? Um, so I think the purpose of tonight is the Board would like to hear from you. There are a couple guiding questions that I will read, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the new, um, Chair. So the questions are, um, one around high school choice, we know Heartland has high school choice. We know that, um, there is, um, strong sentiment in this community that that's an important part of the educational experience for students here. So, um, Act 73 will reshape education governance and funding. We know that high school choice is a valiant part of, of our community, this community. So we would like to know why does school choice matter to you and your family, if it does? If it doesn't, you're, feel free to say that as well. And what are the opportunities that could be realized with a regional high school model? There is a lot of talk about a regional high school model. No construction funding to make it happen, but there's talk about it. And, um, which strengths of the Heartland Elementary School under the new law are most essential to preserve and build upon? And what key opportunities for growth and improvement for our school and students do you see as a result of the potential change brought on by Act 73? And just some areas, educational areas to, for you to think about, um, in your response and, and others as well that appeals to you. But certainly programming and academics, um, athletic arts usually are part of school, um, students' experience in some way or other, clubs or what, or whatnot. Um, location, transportation, um, think about your lives and your families and, um, what's gonna be reasonable in terms of, you know, driving your kids to school and activities. And, um, also, I think Heartland's a really special community, it's pretty tight knit, there's a lot of connection here and assuming people want to preserve that in some way, so, um, thinking about that community connection, um, is also important. So I think I'm gonna turn it over to.
And I'm gonna turn it over to you guys. Um, so it's really about, um, hearing from all of you, um, what your thoughts are around this. So if you have a comment, um, you have lovely questions, um, we can certainly take, I will tell you, we probably can't answer a lot of them because so many of them are still outstanding, but we can certainly try and if we can't get them tonight, um, we'll get them out to you at a later time, um, as well. So if you have a question or a statement, um, raise your hand, come on up to the mic, um, so make sure it's recorded properly. Not to make you like nervous about it, so we can make sure it's recorded properly. And state your name when you do that.
Who's gonna be the first one?
Uh, Lila Morrissey, Heartland resident. Um, so I just want to clarify, make sure, is it.
Oh, hold on, you're gonna start all over again. It's right on the top.
Hello. I'm Andrew Shirley, I'm the buyer. Lila Morrissey, Heartland resident. Um, I just want to make sure I understand the key pieces that I think will be impacting our community. One is, I think it sounds like we're gonna look at a 20% reduction in per child allocation. Um, is that kind of correct?
Uh, I, we're going, we're going to, yes.
Yes, something along those lines. So, um, like, I, I'm just thinking about all the things that I value here, like our wonderful drama and music program, um, our community, early dinner, our dinners with the community, there's lots of things that make Heartland special. So that breaks my heart to think if any of those were to go away, um, it's probably, I don't know, part of Heartland. Um, and the other piece, I'm thinking about the requirements, like 15 children per middle school. We don't have that per class, so what does that mean? Does that mean we are gonna have like 24 kids in each middle school class and somehow squeeze them into one room? Um, just thinking about the quality. Just thinking about the quality of education. I know the kids already struggle with listening, that the teacher isn't just picturing 24 kids pushed in the room together. So those are kind of my two big concerns.
I have Amy Zanayo, I'm a Hartland resident. I also teach in Hartford. The high school choice is definitely something the reason that we moved to Hartland. So that's, that's kind of the thing. In that seeing our children having different needs for high school and knowing that that would allow that option, there just aren't many options in Vermont. So it's, it was important for us for that reason, just knowing that they had different needs. So I think that's part of it. And I think for those of us who have children who are in middle school or kind of older, who are being close to that, this is causing a lot of anxiety and not knowing what are our options in the near future and like, what should we be thinking about? And what make life, family decisions should we make?
Is there any timeline around when something like choice would either be granted or taken away? Like, is there some timeline around that?
I think before 2020. Well, I think the goal is that we're going to be now on this year. And if, if it falls apart, if they can't agree on a map, then all of it goes away on the formula. So I think they're, they're pretty bound and determined to figure it out this, this session.
I think even if that, if that does get decided that, you know, school choice is going to be limited in some way, I think potentially having an idea of like, if a student has a graduation date of a certain, you know, date, then that student will have these options. You know what I mean? Like knowing kind of whose grandfather then, who's not. Like all of this seems to be wonderful.
Laura Garcia, I just had kind of like a clarification question. Is this something that, like how we operate now is not going to stand? And something will definitely change. How that looks, we don't know, but.
Potentially, not necessarily. Like, if, if they can't decide, if they can't agree on a map, nothing happens.
The foundation formula is now law?
Yeah, but I think it's dependent on.
Redistricting.
So yeah, it's, it's a really uncomfortable place to be because we're not sure.
Yeah, but come, so clarifies, is around, say, in March, when reelection of our school board and things like that. We can anticipate having a school board real, election and those kinds of things and having our Hartland school board in place.
For next year, yeah, yes.
But it could be just until by November 27.
Yes.
I put that in Hartland's in. Also, I have a question that we don't have the answers to. Is there going to be some kind of clause in place about siblings? Are we going to, you know, we have a child that's, let's say a junior and then a sibling is about to be affectionate? Are they going to be permitted to attend the same school? Because that is a huge transportation fee for parents. Just a big concern for me.
But I don't think so, right? There is not currently a family grandfather and clause in there. So we can potentially have kids.
Yeah. That's our direction.
Interesting.
Yeah, the child might be, I have a grandfather, but the, will be grandfather, but not the family.
Yes.
That's not.
I would imagine that's going to come.
I would think, yeah.
Especially for a larger world's district center.
I'm going to go over again. I feel like my husband and I came maybe 11 years ago at this point to talk about whether Act 63. And one of the things we said is we moved to this town for our high school choice. I mean, it's, I would say the number, one reason why we moved to Hartland is because we loved being able to choose. We have three children. So be able to decide what high school in the area would work best for each child was something that we really wanted to make sure that we could fulfill for our children. So I'd be sad to see that go away. You know, I, I hope we're able to keep that. I'm nervous that we're not going to be able to. I'd say if we're not able to keep high school choice, I feel like for me, I think a regional high school sounds interesting because you're pulling from three towns or three areas that, like you said, we have a lot of common realities with, you know, the surrounding towns. So I feel like for me, my number one is to keep high school choice. However, we can do that, it would be great. But if we can't do that, I would be interested to look at and see what it would be to make some sort of regional school in the area.
Hi, my name is Julie Hindlin, Hartland resident. And I echo a lot of sentiments from earlier on about the major concerns and curriculars that are offered locally here in Hartford, and class sizes, academic resources, and just the fulfillment that we all have and why many of us choose a small town life. And then as they get older, having this whole choice going on. So one specific question that hasn't been asked yet, and I haven't read about it, but concern is with this school choice potential limitation, that it also sets the boundaries statewide. I'm imagining Vermont's trying to keep money in Vermont, which would initially eliminate New Hampshire as a school choice and uniquely being in the upper valley. Those are all things that are nice to consider. So curious about that and how we respond to it. Also, thank you for knowing, seeing the lines being drawn, what this is coming and is evident. And starting the early conversations about if we have to be doing this, what can we be doing locally or those of the alignment? So really tough spot, but just echoing those sentiments and those are my immediate concerns. Thank you.
Just to answer that, Julie, I don't think anyone knows. And obviously the New Hampshire school right now that people have access to is Hanover. And so I think that, you know, and can we get anybody left in? It's not in your state district. Okay. Because KU A will definitely be out because it's a higher state. But I think nobody knows right now exactly. But yes, there's definitely a motivation to keep money in the state. And it's unclear, you know, one of the things that's going to change, and this actually gets back to Lila to your question about sort of like the percent reduction in cost. One thing that Hartland will benefit from is that this is going to lower the high school tuition. Like we spend a lot of money on high school tuition to all the high schools that we send to. And that's because we're not empowered to negotiate those costs. So when Woodstock High School worries about losing their arts and, and extra.
Dude, you just stole my thunder.
They increase the tuition for sending schools, right? And we bear the brunt of that. So one thing that will help is that it's not like it's going to necessarily be a 20% reduction at the elementary level, because some of that will be offset by, you know, we're spending above 20,000 per high school student in the town. And so that will be, you know, a little bit helpful. But one of, you know, I think the idea is that one of the cost containment strategies is to minimize schools that can set a tuition price.
So I was going to piggyback on that. School choice is super expensive. It's super expensive. And being from a district that, like Hannah just said, was at one board meeting one day when they raised it $2,000. And then the next day I'm at this board meeting having to cut teachers because of what other districts are doing, like it's, it's killing this town. And so like, I, I like school choice. I do. But it's, it's not affordable anymore. It's not affordable because there's no cap. State refuses to put a cap on it. So instead of putting a cap on it, they're just going to get rid of it. Or at least that's why I feel like. And the idea of a regional high school is like a brilliant one. Like, we've got three great districts that can come together and really make something amazing. And one thing I know the state's trying to do, which I really appreciate, is like make sure that every district has a technical center. And we already have Hartford, which is fabulous. And like, so that doesn't mean, so that means that if we have a regional high school, we could do a regional high school and still have Hartford. It's not like that's going to go away. So all students who go to Woodstock right now or Windsor, who are part of the Hartland, the Hartford program, they miss half a day of school from their sending town and they go to Hartford. And like, what a wonderful world it would be if they were there the full time. Because the sense of belonging is really hard when you're in two different schools and things like that. So I see this idea of like a regional high school, like as much as I don't love it, and I would love to, again, keep our school choice. If we have to do something, it would be great. And between all three of these town, like districts, Hartland's in the middle. We should build it right here in Hartford. Then you guys don't have to worry about schlepping any kids anywhere. It's going to be right here.
So maybe just, you know, I, I very much feel Heather's sentiment about the potential beauty of a regional high school. I think it is probably important to just reiterate something that Christine said, which is that right now, the idea of a regional high school is very far and very, very many millions of dollars in the future. And so I think it's important to note that, that combining these districts would not magically appear the regional high school dreams, right? So what it would mean is that actually we would more likely have access then to the current existing high schools which exist in this un, as yet undefined new SU or district.
Would they be the choice until this regional school is developed?
One would hope, but I think a really important slide that I want to just make sure we go back to is this idea of a district versus an SU. So I think it's important to note that we don't know what they will say to a town without a high school who is in a district with multiple high schools. Will all of the kids in that un, what's the term that's used for us?
Non-operational.
Not, will they tell all the kids in the non-operational town, you can pick between these three, or will they say to the kids in the non-operational town, here we're going to draw a Mercedes Benz sign and this third goes here and this third goes here and this third goes here. And so I think one thing for us to potentially discuss is, is one of the hopes for Hartland to retain our district status as opposed to becoming a larger district. You know, do we, do we want to advocate for the, for the right to do that with an SU? They're going to decide. We're not really, we're not voting members on this committee, but it's something we could advocate for that would retain some degree of local control and ability to make those decisions. The argument against that is that it's, it is theoretically more expensive because you're, you're having to contain your own administrative work within the district. But there's, nobody's yet produced data that consolidation saves money. So there are state examples of this. Maine did it and did a, you know, pretty big study and they didn't save any money by consolidating. So and, you know, when we think about cost, yes, tuitioning kids to other high schools has cost money. What has cost way more money than that is health insurance for our teachers and staff. And that is entirely outside the control of anyone in this room or in the state of Vermont, right? Because that's about inflationary climate of healthcare in America. So it's, so I think we should be a little careful that saying like getting rid of tuition is the, is the answer to keep property taxes low? Property taxes are going to keep going up because it costs more to do everything. Provide health insurance and, you know, cost of living adjustments, et cetera. And so that is just the, the kind of counterpoint, I think, to seeing a regional high school as the obvious answer to all of this is that A, it's pretty far in the future and B, by signing on to that, we may relinquish a lot of control.
And this will not save money. This plan will not save money. I don't want anybody to think that it will. And it's, it's very clear that it will. And I think it came up because taxes increased considerably after, you know, there were some reasons for that, but mostly the COVID money ran out and we had hired additional staff and we needed them. But. The non-circus. But I mean, there are people that created this bill that under the guise that we have to save money, that come out publicly and said, this, this is not going to save money. So just to be clear on that. And so, you know, then the question is, then why are we doing this? Well, they, they come back to the opportunities and resources for kids. They're making that more equitable across the state. There are districts, you know, Hartland spends 18.5 on a student, Slay Valley spends under 10. So there are inequities across the state. And I think that's part of the rationale behind the legislation. But are there other ways to do that besides consolidating? So.
Anna Brubbs, first grade teacher out of Hartland. And I'm thinking about our near future in class sizes. What will that look like if we don't meet the requirements?
It will look like larger class sizes, likely. I think.
What if they say? What's the maximum? What do they say for combined grades?
You can only combine two grade levels. And I have a question out.
Can kindergarten count in that since it's not part of the minimum? Can you do a K1, two?
I don't think so. I think it's just two grade levels. I have a question out to to attend its association. Because we do have schools that have multi-age classrooms, so they cross those bands. So you may have a one, two, and then one it's 10 and two it's 12. So you have to have 11. So there, there are a lot of unanswered questions. But, you know, as it looks right now, I think Hartland's going to be okay next year in terms of meeting that minimum.
Is there a maximum?
Under EQS, I think.
Okay, so there's a max. EQS is education quality standard.
Yes. So there's a maximum, but they're setting a minimum.
They're setting a minimum.
And the minimum is also averaged over three years. So it's not like, oh, we didn't have enough kindergartners this year. We have to make a sudden change. It will be averaged over three years. And then the education department has the right to come in and make adjustments that they see. So it's a.
And there's a waiver process. But good question.
Hi. I'm Sarah Taylor and I'm a Hartland resident and former school board member. And along with my friend Laura here, I also sat on the Act 46 committee. So just about 10 years ago, I know some of you in the room remember those days, but for the few who don't, just about a little more than 10 years ago, actually, we were charged with a, a, what was supposed to be a very large scale consolidation in Vermont. Very similar to, to what you're seeing here. Didn't go quite as far as Act 73 does. But we, for, was it two or three years?
It felt like.
It felt like.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. But I think it was three years from the, yeah, the beginning of the process until our final report. We spent many, many hours and honestly, a lot of Vermont taxpayer money looking at the possibility of consolidating just within the SU at that point. So we were, they were only asking people to look within the existing SUs. And many times during that process, we, you know, we said, we wish we could look bigger. We wish we could, could look at a regional option. We wish we could talk to Woodstock and Hartford and Norwich and see if we could put something together. Because this small scale consolidation that we're looking at had, you know, there would have been a lot of upheaval and there just wasn't a big upside because there wasn't a lot of money to be saved. And so I want to commend the, the board for being open to having those conversations. I think it's really, really important to sort of see what those possibilities are and look at, at, you know, what, what we can do if we collaborate. One question I had was how many, what would be the, the student population among those three districts, SUs?
Roughly 3,800, so pretty close.
So pretty close to that, to that number. So that's interesting. So, you know, one of the, one of the things that I've, I've actually been sort of following in an extremely nerdy way. I think because I spent so many hours looking at Act 46, I've been sort of following this process. And I even, I'm embarrassed to say that while I, for longer, I sometimes watched the, the redistricting task force meetings. My family thinks I'm crazy. But it's really interesting. So if you haven't done that, if you haven't watched any of those meetings, you should absolutely do it. They're right. You just Google redistricting task force and state of Vermont and you'll find them. And it's really interesting to get a sense of what people are thinking. We have two local members on that task force. Rebecca Fulton, who is Sarah Condeff and former Secretary of Education, who lives in Norwich, has a lot of experience with the, you know, Hanover-Norwich schools. And Jay Badham is the former superintendent of the Hanover-Norwich schools, who lives in Strathairn. And so those two people would be fantastic people to share your thoughts with. Because our wonderful board here is working hard to understand and to come up with their response. That they don't really have any control or a power over this situation at all. This has been put on them. And those members of the redistricting task force are the people to contact to say, you know, this is something that's important to me, this is something that, you know, I'm interested in. And I don't want to go in too long, but one of the things that I sort of wondered watching these meetings is that there are a lot of towns who have approached the task force to say that they see a supervisor union as being the most, you know, the most efficient way to continue to deliver education. So that is something, even with the conversations happening regionally, you can make that known to the task force. And, you know, that may be, that may be worth it. And then the final thing I'll say, and I'll stop talking, is, and I'm, you know, Laura and I, I think both would be happy to answer any sort of historical questions about what we learned during the Act 46 process. There's a final report that has just a wealth of stuff in it that we spent money figuring out, you know? And it might be worth, you know, just taking a look at that report. But just the final thing I'll say is I think it's really important to think about governments. Because, you know, as you pointed out, we can design an amazing regional high school, and if there aren't construction funds to build it, it won't exist. And so in that case, I think it is really important to kind of look at the maps and figure out where are the population centers? Where does Heartland fit within a representative government system? Would we have, you know, who would, who would our, who would we be aligned with? Would we have the power to make decisions about where possible district lines might be drawn? And it sounds a little cynical to me, and I would like to say, you know, collaborate, cooperate, and you can trust your neighbors, which I think you can, but I think it's important to know that all towns have self-interests, like it or not. And it's just really important for you as a board, I mean, to understand where those, where those votes are coming from and what some of the scenarios are as this district comes into existence. So thank you for all your work. I so appreciate it.
Okay. I was just made aware that there is a public hearing of the redistricting committee up in Bradford on Friday from 4:30 to 6:30. And there is an option to join virtually as well.
And there are three more sessions following in different parts of the state. I had Laura send an email to all the, should be in your email, this information, but happy to send it again if people need it.
Yeah, there's four dates, so you can join virtually to follow them.
And they're really, they're really to give Vermonters opportunities to share their perspective and priorities. So we encourage anybody to Yes.
Can you share when the timeline would be for when school choice would be impacted? Because I'm trying to think, I have a seventh grader, and I just wondering, you know, is that something that?
No, because it might not be. We don't know. We don't know. As soon as we know, we vote.
Could it, I mean, could it be as bad as early as next year?
No.
Not until 2028?
Likely the flu of our present.
So I was gonna say, current eighth graders will we can safely say with that. Yeah. Current eighth graders. Next year. But seventh, current seventh graders needs a question mark.
Yeah, the first new school in November of 2027, so the lines will be drawn by then. That board, I think, will have some control over some things, especially if there's if it ends up being Hartford, Windsor, Woodstock, there will be a governing board over that district or supervisor union. And I think they would have some, some say whether or not they would grant choice within those high
So that's not till November 2027. So that would mean our current seventh graders would still be beyond that. Because they're gonna be, next year will be
For 2025, 2026.
So when that comes, 27 will be ninth grade.
For 26, 27.
But the new districts would theoretically, if this all goes through, it would take effect in July. So as the seventh graders begin their eighth grade year, a district would theoretically be in place. And that would govern where they went to high school, in whatever new system might potentially exist.
In July of 2026.
Next summer, right? So as they start their eighth grade year, these new lines.
Yeah, but there's gotta be, I mean, I think like last night about this, there's gotta be a transition period with this board to a new board, and a transition to, it's not like all of a sudden we walk away. Teacher contracts and all sorts of contracts. And there's gonna, there is a lot of work that has to be done. So
But fortunately, all that work is free, so that's part of the cost savings, right?
It'll be done by
We work at night.
Do this.
That would probably be who's access to these three of the schools, right? Hanover, Sharon, Putney.
Well, anything, maybe, or maybe.
You've already lost access to
You've already lost access to Putney because that's a private.
Sharon's done. Sharon, so far, continued because they meet state guidelines and because they have a sufficient
Number of
Number of low-income students. And then Hanover because it's in New Hampshire's Uh, not necessarily, because Norwich. So there's a sense that what's, you know, what's good for Norwich should be good for everyone else. And but we don't, I've heard people on the task force say that, but I don't know, you know, I don't, I don't know if you've heard the same.
I mean, I think, yeah, I have heard the same. I mean, I think that Norwich, what one person said to me is, if you think people in Heartland are worried, you can't even imagine the worry in Norwich. Because the foundation formula has a much bigger impact on them because they have no control over the tuition in Hanover. And so a huge amount of the funding just flies out the door. And so they have, you know, yeah. So I think there's a possibility that that, that they are willing to argue a case that then can be used as precedent. But I think just again, I think I, I think it would be helpful, I mean, our, our plan is to use some of what we've heard tonight to, to, to send a letter to the, to the committee sort of on behalf of the board, but really ideally representing the people that we've heard from either tonight or after this meeting, if people reach out. It seems to me that, you know, many people express a real desire to maintain the educational programming at Heartland. You know, extracurricular activities, specials, that that feels important. I hear, you know, a lot of people expressing a desire to retain some ability for choice, which seems driven out of a desire to have a chance to get to know your kid and see what might work well for them in an area where there's not a lot of, you know, we're oftentimes tethered to one school, there's not private school options, there's not a lot of other options, having that opportunity. I've heard people talk about this sort of logistical pieces of this, the importance of having a school that works within our busy lives is, you know, working parent, get them ready where they need to go, that piece, you know, just not wanting to expose our kids to the burden of being at a school that is an hour away and two hours away from where their sibling is. Are there other, and then governance, which you sort of mentioned, actually in a different way, but I think I'll maybe just capture that word to say that that idea of sort of having some say over how it goes, I think is something that Heartland, like, almost everyone in Vermont really clings to quite fiercely, that idea of being able to have some control vocally and some representation. Yeah, Julie.
One thing that I've heard come up in conversation just listening as people are introducing themselves, that it's supposed to be hard
Yep.
because of the school, what we have offered, the community and school choice.
Yep.
So my follow-up observation to that is, what is this going to have an impact on the economic revitalization of this Vermont, making it appealing for people to relocate there as the downstream are capped about? All these families chose to move because of how we have it structured today. Would they make that same choice if we put together all of what the Act 73 is about? Or would it make it less appealing, we stay in the capture, we don't get those families in Vermont at all?
Any other items of discussion?
I feel like I already know the answer, but my, my kids are very much into athletics and they've been, you know, personally playing Hartford sports since Vermont, they've built relationships. It's boosted their confidence. It's, you know, now what does that mean for, you know, sports in the future? You know, when we consolidate, all of a sudden, are they not allowed to play sports with their peers? Maybe this is the high, I mean, I think that's a huge part of their development. I'm sure that's on the back burner at the end of the day for whoever's making these calls, but it's
But it's, no, but that's what makes it important. Or to balance off that, I think what happens if like, we do get these sort of super districts and what are, like, we play Hartford and Windsor, like, those are like, they're the closest, we play Rutland, we play, you know, kind of all these ones that are around us, like now, it's like, okay, I guess we're playing up in North Country.
They're already doing that.
Down and Brown, no, we are, but like, can you imagine what this is gonna look like? You know, it's gonna, well, it's just gonna be interesting amounts of teams and, I don't know.
I just want to commend all of you for, I mean, not having taken this on, but having it It's so hard to take what is gonna pass down and then deal with where the river is. And so thank you all for the work.
I think we will call this meeting. We just have to set our next agenda for our meetings, according to this agenda. But we can do that. We don't need to have you guys suffer through that, unless you have an important agenda that you would like us to add.
And I think all of our email addresses are available, so if, as you sort of continue thinking about this, if you want to send any feedback, we genuinely, genuinely want to have it integrated into a bit of feedback from Heartland.
And also, as Sarah said, like, let your voices be heard at these meetings. Like, I appreciate so much that you showed up here. Unfortunately, we can't do much, but you can do more by showing up at these other meetings. There's four of them, you can show up at all four. And like, keep saying the same thing, because like, maybe, maybe someone will hear you.
Also, your representatives and senators, because the task force will have to come up with these three maps.
Yep.
But then the legislature is gonna have to vote on it.
Yeah.
And so it's really important that, especially once the maps come, you know, once we see what they actually are, excuse me, and what the, what effect they would have. But it's really important to be in touch with Elizabeth and John and Allison and Becca and Joe. And those are your five people, and let them know how you feel, because they will actually have the ability to approve or not approve these maps.
Little control.
And it's really just one final thing, just because I have really spent a lot of time thinking and reading and ruminating and worrying. And so maybe just, I hope it's not overly Pollyanna, but just as like a final parting thought that does sort of make me feel a little calmer about this, is this is gonna shake out somehow that none of us can predict. At the end of all of this, there are gonna be a lot of really wonderful families in this area who care deeply about providing an incredible community, good academics, athletics, arts, drama, and we are supported by an incredible cohort of educators. And none of that's going away. So whatever lines get drawn, that stuff still exists. And I think that just provides me with a little bit of reassurance that like, we have to ride these waves a little bit. And where it lands, there will still be all of these, like, all of you that are in the room tonight, right? You're still gonna be my kids', you know, alternative parents and village. And so I think, you know, that just does kind of reassure me a little bit, that there's, there's, there's good bones around here, and we still have that to fall back on. So Yeah, it's been overly Polly.
That was totally Pollyanna.
And thank you all so much for
Thank you.
You should come to all of our board meetings.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Is there any, like, texts?
Well, I put that up then.
Okay.
And the budget will just be like priorities.
You know, it's gonna be a sad, sad day. It's gonna be a sad day when all of this shakes out. I will no longer be on the board.
I would like to
Okay, you do, you Do you want to say Second, go.
We did, oh, yeah, we did. I mean, it was from like, it was not really, there wasn't really Heartland, it was just he should come up.